... on kiplinger.com, a personal finance website. Noted for its affordability and unique charm, McAllen shines as a gem for those seeking for a simpler life. With a cost of living of 20.7% below the national average and homes priced at $161,690, it's an affordable haven. McAllen's relaxed pace, rich Mexican culture, and rental values were key features for its inclusion on the list. McAllen tops another list, this time named third best for first-time homebuyers. In a boost for the local real estate market, McAllen claims the third spot among the top 15 cities in the U.S. for first-time homebuyers. The analysis by SmartAsset.com evaluated 185 metro areas, focusing on affordability, growth potential, competition, and demographics. McAllen shines with an inviting real estate market boasting a $210,833,000 median home price and less competition for prospective homebuyers. With five Texas cities securing a position in the top 15, Mayor Javier Villalobos highlighted McAllen's appeal, citing affordable homes, quality of life, and abundant amenities. The city of McAllen conducts a digital community survey for residents' input. McAllen takes a tech-forward step to enhance community involvement by teaming up with Zen City for a digital survey initiative. Through digital ads on social media platforms, the city aims to gather insights from residents on local services and concerns. McAllen City Manager Roy Rodriguez praised the partnership as a "direct collaboration to share the city's future," expressing that the digital platform will simplify participation, fostering inclusivity, and collaboration. The year-round survey, accessible through digital ads, the city of McAllen website, and social media platforms, reflects McAllen's progressive approach to responsive governance. There's more ways to stay cool in this heat with another splash pad inaugurated at the McAllen Youth Baseball Complex. City of McAllen officials officially inaugurated the newest attraction at the McAllen Youth Baseball Complex with the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
The important message today, I think, is that the city of McAllen, the mayor and the city commission are just so focused on ensuring that we maximize everything that we do and that every space that we create comes to life like this. The park was open in 2017, and we knew we had a lot to do. We had to add more facilities, more parking, then we added the Miracle Field, then we added the all-inclusive park, and now the Splash Pad. So I'm really, really proud of this community and our city commission with their dedication to quality of life.
This splash pad is the third in the city of McAllen, including the ones located at Xenia Park and Palmview Park.
So what we realize is, in the heat that we have in South Texas, we need more of them. So we're already in the planning stages of the fourth one and then the fifth one. This is something that is inexpensive and is something that the kids love. So, you know, when you've got 105-degree temperature on a Saturday, there's no better place than here. And then, we also try to ensure that we're doing everything we can for the environment. So what's happening here is that the water that's being used is actually drinking water. So a kid can go in there and, by accident or intentionally, they drink it, it's drinking water. It's fine. But then it goes into our storm sewer system and it's being delivered to the lakes. And from the lakes, we use it for distribution and irrigation. So it is recycled, it's not being wasted here, and we're really proud of that.
The city of McAllen brings Broadway to the Rio Grande Valley. The McAllen Performing Arts Center and Nederlander National Markets are excited to reveal the 2023-2024 Broadway season for the Rio Grande Valley. Featuring four captivating musicals, this season will offer an extraordinary experience. The performances will be held at the McAllen Performing Arts Center and will include shows like Johnny Cash: The Official Concert Experience, Jesus Christ Superstar, Come From Away, and Chicago the Musical.
Well, you know, we do a lot of unique things in McAllen, and we have a lot of presentations, venues, and programs, right, that bring the community together. This is an example of one of those that we knew would not only bring the community together, but it gives them an opportunity to see something that they would otherwise not see. When we created the McAllen Holiday Parade, it was primarily for one reason, that many of the people in the Rio Grande Valley cannot go to New York or California to see a parade of that caliber, so we brought it here. Same thing with the Performing Arts Center. Broadway is known for New York City, and now, of course, it's in Chicago and Houston as well. But Broadway is known for New York City. Not very many people can go see a Broadway show in NYC, so we brought it here. And those are the kinds of things that we're really proud of. They're magnificent to build, but it's about the experience that our community is going to have when they see Broadway right here in McAllen.
Secure season or VIP tickets at experiencemcallan.com/broadway. By subscribing to a package starting at only $150, patrons will enjoy benefits like guaranteed seats, renewals, and early access. HEB and McAllen Performing and Cultural Arts Foundation unite to uncork a night of philanthropy in support of the arts. HEB, a proud supporter of community enrichment initiatives, and the McAllen Performing and Cultural Arts Foundation unveil an extraordinary event coming to McAllen, Noche de Vino, the Great Gatsby Soiree, a fundraising gala that will benefit the McAllen Performing and Cultural Arts Foundation. Noche de Vino will include a dazzling night of wine, food, and music, and will be held on Saturday, September 23rd, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the McAllen Convention Center Ballroom. Tickets can be purchased at ticketmaster.com. The event exemplifies the joint mission to bring cultural excellence to the forefront of the community. The city of McAllen celebrates its 10-year partnership with McAllen ISD to bring back the McAllen Holiday
And now, for McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. We'll begin today with a pledge of allegiance, followed by the invitation by Commissioner Watin Samora.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could momentarily bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings of today with all the joys, worries, and concerns that it brought. Teach us to delight in the day that you have provided to us and surrender the worry and exen-- anxiety of the day's troubles to you. We pray that you will continue to guide our community, our leaders, and our families and children to follow and do your will. Protect our first responders, guide them, and provide a hedge of protection against those that would seek to harm or threaten them. Bring peace and harmony to a world in conflict and in war. Help unharden the hearts that cause strife in the lives of people in our community, nation, and world. I ask you to provide us with wisdom and discernment this evening as we go about conducting city business and city affairs that only brings honor and glory to you. In Lord Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, and also before we begin, don't forget that election, as members, today was the first day of elections, we have several very important amendments to our constitution, including one of them that involves teacher retirement. So it's very important that you all get out to both places. Presentation, Ms. Chris Lash.
Scenic City People's Choice Award. No commissioner?
No.
Oh, yes. Presentation? Just a presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, and residents. Back on October the 5th, during the Texas Municipal League Conference in Dallas, there was a special awards ceremony that was held by Scenic Texas Incorporated. Scenic Texas is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that works hard to create a more beautiful Texas through promoting municipal landscaping, design standards for public projects, signage control, and scenic municipal development throughout our great state. I'm joined up here by Elvira Alonso, Public Works Director, Chris Lash, manager of Keep McAllen Beautiful, as well as Julia Lash, our grants administration director, and Gabriel Bettis, also from her department. It was their efforts and those of their respective teams that led to us receiving these two very impressive awards this month. First, McAllen has been awarded a platinum certification as a scenic city. This is the highest level attainable and speaks well for our amazing staff and their hard work at building out an amazing and scenic city. And for the record, there were only 23 other cities that were recognized this year, and we were one of that proud group. Additionally, McAllen was the recipient of the 2023 Scenic City People's Choice Award for the entire state of Texas, receiving more public votes than any other community in the state. A huge thanks again to our staff and to the team at MCN and the Office of Communications, as well as the entire city of McAllen community for this award. These were received with pride and with a commitment to continue our coordinated efforts to create a beautiful and scenic McAllen for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we have proclamation, UTRGV ranks mayor pro tem Quintanilla.
Dr. Bailey.
Dr. Bailey, there he is.
Good afternoon. I'm honored and privileged to give the following proclamation. Whereas the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, opened its doors to its inaugural class of students August 31st, 2015, as the first major public university in Texas to be established in the 21st century, welcoming an overall student population of approximately 30,000 students, making it the largest Hispanic-serving institution in the nation. Whereas Washington Monthly ranked UTRGV as number one among all Texas universities and number 60 among all universities nationwide, based on three main criteria: social mobility, public service, and research. Number one among all Texas universities and number two nationally for performance of Pell Grant students. Number one among Texas universities for net price of attendance. And number one among Texas universities for best social mobility. And whereas, the Chronicle of Higher Education has ranked UTRGV as number one fastest-growing doctoral public university in Texas and number three nationally. Additionally, Degree Choices, a team of education researchers who provide a guide to prospective students, has ranked UTRGV as number one among public Texas universities and number 15 among universities nationally based on economic value. And whereas, the U.S. News &amp; World Report has ranked UTRGV number six among public universities in Texas and number 227 among universities nationwide, up 72 places from the previous year. And whereas, Hispanic Outlook on Education Magazine has ranked UTRGV as number two in total bachelor's degrees granted, number three in total master's degree granted, and number four in total enrollment for four-year schools, and will spotlight UTRGV on the front cover of its October 2023 edition for its excellence and commitment to Hispanics in higher education. And whereas, UTRGV is committed to serving the Rio Grande Valley via an innovative and unique multicultural education dedicated to students' access and success, and to championing, leading research, healthcare, application on university discoveries, and supporting sustainable development, community engagement, and well-being. Now therefore, I, Omar Kethanian, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of McAllen, Texas, by virtue and authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, as top-rated university. Congratulations.
Thank you to Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the entire council, for all of your support. You know, if you notice, this is our eighth year, right? We're not very old, but in eight years, we think we've achieved quite a bit. We set out to be the best value in higher education in the state of Texas, and we think that we're there. But you know, we didn't do this on our own, and these awards aren't simply our awards, they're all of our awards, right? We've had such strong support in the Rio Grande Valley and from the city of McAllen. As someone who lives about two miles from here and works about two and a half miles from here, it's a wonderful city to be in. Your support has been so strong. When you go by the Rio Bank Building, remember that we have a lot more offices there than anybody else, right? We have the third, fourth, fifth, and half the sixth floors. UTRGV employees right there in McAllen. When you drive by the, you know, the post office, you turn right there on Pecan, what do you see? Collegiate High School going up, a cancer center going up. These represent partnerships, and they're the product of what we have done together. So we thank you very much for this. Council, thank you for your ongoing support. My councilman right there. Everything you've done, Mayor, we deeply appreciate you, and this is really only the beginning. You're gonna see a lot more, so thank you for all your support.
Thank you. We have native plant month, Commissioner Haddad.
City of McAllen proclamation. Whereas native plants are an important part of the natural heritage, history, and identity of the city of McAllen, the Tamaulipan Thorn Forest and other habitats in the Rio Grande Valley give our region unique landscapes that support plants and animals found nowhere else in the United States. The Center for Urban Ecology at Quinta Mazatlan celebrates annually with Planta Nativa activities, including native plant workshops, speakers, native garden contests, children's programs, native tree giveaway for schools and homeowners, and educational public relations. Native plants provide economic benefits for the city by helping to grow the business of ecotourism, encouraging visitors from around the world to visit our beautiful natural areas in McAllen, Texas. Our native plants help us conserve water through their drought-resistant adaptations and add beauty to our city. The city of McAllen encourages residents to use native plants in their gardens and landscapes for the benefits of people and wildlife. I, Sebi Haddad, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 Native Plant Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddad, Mayor, City Commission. I'm Bob Simpson. I serve on the Friends of Keep the Mazatlan Board of Directors, and I wanted to say that the city has demonstrated continued commitment to reforestation, we're calling it the tiny forest in McAllen, at Quinta Mazatlan, at Cathy Middle School, at Palmview Park, and so we applaud the city for growing those little spaces of tiny forests. Quinta Mazatlan is a prime example of the benefits of using native plants in your garden, in the valley, for attracting wildlife and butterflies and habitat and just enjoyment. They're drought-tolerant, as the commission, the beautiful proclamation. Personally, I love to go to Quinta Mazatlan. When you get out of your car and you walk up that walkway along the tree-lined boulevard up there, it's just, your blood pressure drops. Everything changes, and you get up there to that paradise up there around the house. It's just a spectacular place, and it puts you in a whole new frame of mind. I love to take people there, visitors, especially my granddaughter. So I'd like to also encourage you to pick up one of these flyers that are being passed out. If you don't have one, pick up one. This coming Thursday night at Quinta is a celebration of Native Plant Month at a festival called Planta Nativa. So we'll see you at Quinta Mazatlan. Thank you.
Next, we have Municipal Court Week with Commissioner Aguirre. All the pretty women, except for you and I. Proclamation, State of Texas, County of Vidalgo, and the City of McAllen. Whereas the City of McAllen Municipal Court, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, has existed since the city incorporated in 1911. And whereas the City of McAllen recognizes the accomplishment of all Texas municipal courts and salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities, and detering future criminal behavior. And whereas, the state law authorizes a municipality to appoint municipal judges for a term of office. The City of McAllen Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. And whereas the City of McAllen Municipal Court judges are not policymakers for the city of McAllen, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independently of the governing body of this city commission, city officials, and employees. And whereas the City of McAllen Municipal Court judges and clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of justice throughout participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas the City of McAllen Municipal Court became a court of record by ordinance on August 23rd, 2022, to increasingly increase transparency and accountability within the court. And whereas the city council recognizes the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supporting the City of McAllen's Municipal Court in compliance with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Tony Aguirre Jr., City Commissioner for the City of McAllen, and by virtue of my authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim November 6th to the 10th, 2023, as Municipal Court Week. Thank you for everything you do. You're the neighbor of mine.
Thank you, Commissioner Aguirre. Thank you, Mayor, City Commission. I just want to thank everyone for the proclamation and for the dedication of some of my clerks which you see up here. We are a small but mighty court. We're comprised of five judges, one sergeant from McAllen PD, and three warrant officers from McAllen PD, a prosecutor and a legal assistant from the office of the city attorney, a bailiff, a court administrator, who's Ms. Rodriguez, right here to my right, and 16 clerks. And this year, this small but mighty group has processed 23,469 tickets, we've issued 422 search warrants, conducted 10,654 arraignments of criminal cases, and issued 515 magistrate's orders of emergency protection to protect victims of domestic violence. It's without the hard work that all my staff does and the staff of the police chief and also of the city attorney, we couldn't do what we do at our court every day. We remain committed, as always, to increase transparency and accountability. In the future, we are looking to revamp our team court program this year, which will be coming shortly. We are going to redo our website and also increase our community involvement. And all of this is in pursuit of our chief goal, which is justice for all. Thank you.
And last, we have Arbor Day, Commissioner Samora.
Before I begin with proclamation, I extend, be remiss to extend my apologies to Mrs. Veronica Gonzalez and Dr. Guy Bailey. I'm wearing the wrong tie. So. Good afternoon, everyone. How's everybody? It is my privilege and honor to read the following proclamation. State of Texas, County of Vidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska in 1872. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil from wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, our renewable resource giving us paper and other wood products. And whereas, in our city, trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, Keep McAllen Beautiful's Arbor Day celebration was created to help establish a dedicated tree fund for our city to help ensure a prosperous future for our community through proper tree maintenance and tree plantings with the help of every citizen, as well as promote physical well-being through a 5K, 10K, kids 2K, how many K's do we have? And 25-mile, 100K bike ride. My gosh. Now therefore, I, Joaquin Samora, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the board of commissioners for the city, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 4th, 2023, as Arbor Day celebration. Congratulations, Mrs. Lash.
Thank you to the city manager, mayor, and our commissioners, and I'd also like to thank all of the city departments that help us, you know, put our program together. Keep McAllen Beautiful is a nonprofit organization, and as such, mentioned in the proclamation, this is our fundraiser where we actually give away trees. We invite everyone to join us on Saturday, November 4th. We will be giving native trees and shrubs, and you can come along and join us to learn how to properly plant a tree. Also, there's a lot for children to learn about the environment, and so we invite everyone to join us on Saturday, November 4th, at Westside Park. Also, at this time, I'd like to thank our board members that are here and our directors from Public Works that are here supporting us, as well as Rene, who's one of our, we made him one of our committee members. I'd like to invite Mike McClure, who is the chairman of the Tree Committee, to come up now.
Thank you, Chris. We have a little bonus tonight. The Texas A&amp;M Forest Service and the Texas Chapter of the International Society of Aboriger Culture annually present an award for the Outstanding Community Forestry Program at their conference in Waco, the Texas Tree Conference. According to their criteria, this award recognizes individuals, organizations, or municipalities that have promoted community forestry through a program that significantly engages, educates, or enhances the community. We are happy and proud to announce that the 2023 recipient of the Outstanding Community Forestry Award for Texas is Keep McAllen Beautiful.
We appreciate it.
We go to item number one, public hearings.
Tonight, we have four items listed under routine. It's a rezoning and three conditional use permits. As always, they come with a favorable recommendation from Plant and Zoning Commission and had no opposition. They can be approved in one motion or discussed separately as desired. They are a rezone from R1 to R3C at 7809 and 7801 North Ware Road, a conditional use permit renewal for one year at $500,000. at 7809 and 7801 North Ware Road, a conditional use permit renewal for one year at 500 East Nolana, a conditional use permit renewal for one year for a food truck park at 1001 Ash Avenue, and a conditional use permit renewal for two years at 5009 Buddy Owens Boulevard.
Do you have anybody here to speak against any of the items? Anybody? Which approve?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Melch and Carrie's, item B1.
Next item is a conditional use permit for one year for a BYOB event space with mixed use at 610 North Main Street. This property is located on the east side of North Main between Fur and Gumwood. It is zone C3. Adjacent zoning is C3 to the north, west, and south, and R3A to the east. Surrounding uses include both businesses and residential properties. The applicant is proposing to operate an event center with BYOB, stating the venue is a vegan convenience store, vintage shop, gallery, and DJ hub. The proposed hours are 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and then noon to 2:00 AM, Saturday and Sunday. Outdoor events are being proposed to stop at 11:00 PM. In your packet, you will find both code and police reports going back to 2021 on this venue's noncompliance, rather, citing noise, operating without a conditional use permit, and consumption of alcohol without ATBC permit. Staff has fielded several calls, both in opposition as well as in favor. The opposition callers cite ongoing noncompliance as well as concerns with noise. The calls in favor cite items such as the locale's vegan offerings and the retail aspect of the venue. The item was presented at the October 3 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where the applicant discussed his plans. And after some discussion over the proposal, the past history of noncompliance as well as their lack of parking, the board voted to recommend disapproval of the request in a three to one vote. As such, a supermajority of those present here today would be required. Staff is recommending disapproval. And I believe we have both sides here today.
And may we hear from the applicant first?
Mayor, you did have several citizens sign up for public comment. Just so you're aware, the larger stack is related to this item.
Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen of the board, mayor, city manager, and city attorney, and city commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I want to first clarify that our location has apartments in the back as well. So some of those, or a lot of those reports on that police report apply to the back parking, to the back apartments, and possibly to the businesses next door. So I just want to clarify that. I did prepare a speech to present today, which is what I'll be reading right now. Good evening. My name is Pedro Rodriguez, and I stand before you as the founder and creator of Tropicasa. Many may know me from my involvement with the city and local businesses. As a resident and DJ of McAllen for about a decade, I have had the honor of being featured as a profile on Visit McAllen's I Know A Place, Visit McAllen's Mahica, also known as McAllen Day in Monterrey, and McAllen's First Mixon Festival in 2019. All these experiences have molded me into a business owner dedicated to enriching our community. Tropicasa is not just a place. It's a vibrant, ever-evolving hub in the heart of McAllen, Texas. Located at 610 North Main Street, Suite BNC, in the De Palmas Historic District, also known as the Arts District, Tropicasa has thrived for the past three and a half years, opened every day to the general public. With the incredible support of our community, we've transformed an aged building into a creative space for people of all ages and backgrounds. Tropicasa is not your typical convenience store. It's a community store, a creative store, and a cultural store, all rolled into one. Tropicasa stands as a nexus for art, music, and culture. The space has become a cornerstone of our community, offering a unique array of snacks and beverages, some of which you won't find anywhere else in the city, this neighborhood, or this region. But we're more than just a store. We're redefining the very concept of a convenience store. We're supporting the local gig economy and creating social and economic opportunities for DJs, musicians, artists, foodies, and cultural workers. We've engaged with local artists, residents, and organizations, forging strong connections. We offer art exhibits for underserved youth and adults, DJ workshops and trainings, vendor opportunities for local startups, and promote conscious consumption through our selection of vegan snacks and beverages, all while maintaining a low-carbon footprint. Such efforts have not only benefited our artists, but have poured over $15,482.71 into state and local sales taxes. Our impact on the Arts District and the City of McAllen is unmistakable. Since 2020, we witnessed the revival of the Arts District, thanks to the collective efforts of local businesses and Tropicasa. We've woven ourselves into the cultural fabric of the area. Tropicasa has hosted over 175 events, ranging from gallery exhibits to community markets, drag shows, runways, and live DJ and music events. We've provided a platform for over 50 local DJs, helping them secure residencies and gig opportunities at various venues. We've aided them in gaining recognition in places like New York, Austin, San Antonio, and different venues across the state. Our reach even goes far beyond our city, featuring artists from around the world, such as Amsterdam, London, LA, New York, Mexico City, Miami, Monterrey, Peru, and more. We've had the privilege of collaborating with Sears XM, Pitbull, LNF, Four Corners Brewery, Firestone Walker, Guayaki, the Hidalgo Pump House, the McAllen Creative Incubator, the Pearl Brewery, and Hemisfer Park in San Antonio. And now we're reaching even broader audiences with our weekly live streams on platforms like YouTube, SoundCloud, and Twitch. Yet, we face challenges. Zoning restrictions, parking requirements, noise complaints, and other constraints threaten our growth. The notion of moving from the Arts District contradicts its very essence. While most arts districts in the US host an independent music venue, why should McAllen be any different? It would be our hope not to face penalty challenges and economic constraints for playing a part in the Arts District's evolution into a vibrant entertainment space. It's vital to understand that we aren't pushing for an overcrowded event space, bar, or nightclub environment. We wish to contribute our expertise and experiences to create a calm, safer, and more inclusive city where the arts flourish without being a nuisance. In conclusion, we envision Tropicasa as a unique community space combining vintage clothing, art, records, snacks, and beverages. We propose limited-capacity events with BYOB, limiting outdoor events on the side patio away from the back parking lot until 11:00 PM, and indoor events in the gallery until 2:00 AM. These conditions will allow us to platform our artists, engage gig workers, and bring in revenue to help sustain the business. Our goal is to host few music events per week to minimize our effect on the neighborhood. We will have sound control measures in place indoors and out, limiting our music between 50 to 75 decibel levels. We will invest in effective soundproofing measures indoors, including acoustic insulation, sound barriers, and proper sealing of doors and windows to minimize noise leakage. Our solution to alleviate parking congestion is supported by our strict limited capacity of 49 people indoor and outdoor events. In addition, we are requesting a variance to address our insufficient parking situation. Our model is not unheard of. Similar spaces in other cities such as the Hangry Planet, The Little Shop New York, The Lot Radio, Dub Lab, and Kiosk Radio have successfully integrated into their communities. We request the city commissioners to look beyond zoning restrictions and visualize a modern, inclusive arts district that truly represents the spirit of McAllen. In support of my CU process, I was able to obtain about 107 signatures from multiple businesses on Main Street, as well as tenants of the McAllen Creative Incubator. And I have all of my signatures here. It was updated because I did get a part of the petition yesterday or the day before yesterday. So I have all that here. And I would like to ask the city for support in my business today.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in favor? Okay. And let me, do you all have anything different to add?
Yeah.
Okay, on behalf or against?
On behalf.
On behalf. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to remind the public that public comment is limited to three minutes per person testifying. So if I could ask the public to please help us cooperate?
I will keep this very short and simple. My main point-
If you could identify yourself by giving us your name and your residence, please.
Yes. My name is Brianna Lopez. I live here in McAllen, Texas, at 4,000 Flamingo Avenue. I just wanted to come up today and show my support. And I will begin. So in the City of McAllen and in the valley, it's very hard as a young individual, especially as a woman, to go to places where you are safe and have like a safe environment to be in. Many people say, well, why don't you just open your business at Uptown or Downtown? And those places are very, very unpredictable. And I have never once felt safe or like I was being taken care of like how I do at Tropicasa. Also, as a student, full-time student at UTRGB, I do meet a lot of people who are art majors, music majors, and Tropicasa has given them the space and the support to show their art and to show what they have to offer. So I just think that it's in the best interest of McAllen to allow us and to give us a chance to show what we're made of. We will, you know, keep in mind all the things that we've done wrong in the past as a noise complaint. And by doing so, we won't overcrowd, we won't allow music after a certain point or the decibels to go over the limit. So I would please hope that you guys take us into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You know what? I'll just call them out. It'll be easier. Adrian Luna.
Hi, I'm Adrian Luna. I live at 620 North Main Street. I'm actually a neighbor of Tropicasa. I've been living there, born and raised in the Art District. I've seen the different phases that it's gone through. I'm 40 years old. So I remember when it was a hub of creativity, artists, and I'm an example of the majority of people that live in that neighborhood, who specifically moved from Austin, from wherever we go. Like, I was born and raised here. You know, I own my craft. I'm an entrepreneur. So when I came back, I specifically wanted to live in the Art District before they were there, all that stuff, because I want to be around other creative entrepreneurs, other creatives, other shops like this, you know? I know it's not a city. I know the city supports the arts that are owned by the city, but you should give them the same, like, support, recognition to independent businesses, which is the point. All eyes are on you, because if you do this to this, I just don't see how it doesn't benefit to, I'm sorry, to help and make it easier for them to reach out to, sorry, I'm a little nervous. It just doesn't make any sense to make it harder as opposed for their expansion. I know there's growing pains with any business. I'm sure the noise complaints and all that stuff have been issues in the past. But with a business like this, I feel it's crucial for you guys to help them grow, as an example, to other independent businesses and owners that want to do the same thing. The whole point of living in the Art District shouldn't just be a convenience for the city when it has to do with the incubator or other art-owned businesses, other art spaces. It should include everybody else in the community. The majority of artists and small business owners that live in this community support Tropicasa. I have a small catering company that, through Tropicasa, helped grow, and I'm opening up my own spot. So thanks to them, and their platform really helped me kind of get to where I'm at now. And I just, you know, hope you can take the time to consider it. And yeah, thank you.
Michaeler, Emanuel Arambula.
Hello, sir. Hello, gentlemen of the board. My name is Emanuel Arambula. I live in McAllen on Salmon Street, close to Tropicasa as well. And I'm coming to you as someone that is public engagement with cycling, avid cyclist. So I appreciate the bike paths that y'all put on Main Street. It really does help the Art District itself to have more commerce, more traffic for multiple businesses, not just Tropicasa. I'm also an artist that has been featured twice at Tropicasa, once during the pandemic, where I witnessed how powerful and vital not only a grocery store is, but a healthy, conscious grocery store is, that provides services for people that are trying to strive by any sense to live a healthier, more conscientious lifestyle. And like Adrian, I grew up coming as an art student and studying psychology and STC, we are congregated to the Art Walk. The Art Walk, as anyone would know, has been facing difficulties the past couple of years due to COVID or internal politics that they might be having because of COVID. It seems like a lot of the gatekeepers, property owners, people that are involved with homeowner associations are kind of plotting against the expansion of a thriving Art District that is lacked thereof. Even if you would visit the Art Plaza, half of the vacant is because it's too expensive to rent there. Across the street, art businesses, they don't rent studios anymore to artists. They rent it to businesses. Even in McAllen Creative Incubator, they don't rent any more studio spaces to artists because they're renting to call center businesses that are from India. And this is all apparent. This is one trip down the street. You will see all this. I see it on a daily basis. Whenever they have a show or in conjunction to that space is El Nopalito, where you can get artisan wine and artisan craft beer that's made by local people who make art into craft beer or wine. Where they can go and try that out. And then connected to it is also Black Honey, a coffee shop that was made by a young Latina woman.
I don't mean to interrupt, sir. Timer's malfunctioning. So if I could ask you to wrap it up, please?
Yes, sir. So this is all bear witness of just being there in the Art District and seeing how the underserved community at large is. And then just one more thing, I see a pattern here, and it's all respecting nature. And my project called Masa, I'm also a small business owner. I have seeds, corn seeds, maize seeds from Oaxaca, all parts of Mexico, rare varieties, and I hand them out free to people so they can grow them in their backyard. So we are truly a force of nature, and I feel like we can all work together to create like a thriving Metropolis, like, just like how-
Sir, again, I need to ask you to wrap it up, please.
We have to pay attention to North McAllen. Thank you.
Viva el Tapé.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. I'm Gir al Dape. I don't live in McAllen. I lived around in Edinburgh and Far, but I like usually come to McAllen for all of my needs and work in McAllen and have worked in McAllen for the past like three to four years. So I think McAllen is very big on trying to expand the city and grow the city, especially through local businesses. I think this is more than a great opportunity to do that via the creative space that Tropicasa offers. They do bring in DJs, artists from different regions of the valley that you usually would never hear of, usually how we're never heard of in other places. So it kind of helps expand us as well as bring the business in. I've interacted personally with a lot of the artists that do come into town, and it offers them a different, like, view of the valley, which is, like, makes us stand out to a lot of people because they're like, wow, I didn't know it was this rich in culture, musically, artistically, besides, you know, obviously, all the revenue we gain from the business. So I think it would be kind of a dis, like, disservice to y'all to not help out the local business grow in that way to help the city grow. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then we have Steven Guerrero.
Thank you so much for your time. For the past three and a half years, Tropicasa has existed and became a part of the, or a vital part of the Arts District. As given the opportunities to be employed and also for a period of times, I worked for Tropicasa, and it was my responsibility to keep Tropicasa a safe space. It was an honor to do so. I've seen what's been done, not only for the people who created music there, but the opportunities it has given me. Without Tropicasa, I wouldn't have been able to work for who I work for. I've worked for multiple venues. I wouldn't have had a second home. Without Tropicasa, I wouldn't be where I'm at. Standing in front of you, I understand your hesitation. I'm just asking that you give us a chance to thrive and create more in our space, and to keep giving opportunities to the people of our community, and to give a chance to a mom and pop shop like Tropicasa, just to survive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody to speak against the item? Yes?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Hilda Edwards, and I'm at 1321 Jasmine. And we've been there for 35 years. And I first was aware of Tropicasa a year ago when we heard loud amplified music inside of our home in the evening. The boom, 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 we could feel it, and we heard the music. So several months later, after several police reports and in-person exchanges with the owner, And then about six weeks ago, a gentleman knocked on our door and asked for our support in opposing Tropicasa, and he is a businessman who lives, who has a business nearby Tropicasa. He was aware of our efforts the last year to stop the loud music, so he stopped by our home and asked for our support in opposing it. And he does not want to be mentioned, but the planning department knows who he is. Anyway, so last Monday, I started a petition, and I have sixty-five signatures, all of residents and business people in the two-hundred-foot radius of Tropicasa. I'd like to present that to you, and then there's a couple of residents here who live close by who have some statements.
Okay, and we have it now.
You do have it?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else that wants to add something different? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, City Commission?
Can you hear me? My voice doesn't travel too far. This statement is not mine, but I add an echo to the voice of this person. I didn't prepare a written statement. I live one block away from Tropicasa. Personally, I've called the police at least eight times for the excessive volume. Personally, I'm all for promoting all the things Mr. Rodriguez wants to support, but it's the collateral damage is the reason for our opposition. So this is a statement of someone who lives exactly behind. There is an alley between the back of the business and the apartment where this person lives. So this is her statement. We live across the street from them, so we hardly sleep, the music is really loud. Sometimes they have the music so loud that I could hear it all the way to my bedroom. I add echo to that. They parked on the streets and I cannot go through them. Sometimes they leave beer bottles and glasses on the side of the street, because I live in the back alley. They pee on the back of my apartment where I live. I hear them laughing so hard and talking, I can hear them. Last time, we told, we asked them if they could speak lower, and they started to get really bad attitudes. I caught two couples having sex behind my apartment. It's so really dark there. They smoke weed, the smell, it smells all the way around where I live. They leave trash outside, they're at, they don't pick up the trash. We try calling the cops, but they don't really do nothing. We live at 609 North Broadway, North Broadway Street, Apartment Five. I live at 507 North Main Street, Tropicana is on Main Street, one block away from where they live. And so it is the collateral damage. Their space is really very tiny. I couldn't tell you how many square feet it is, but it's tiny. If they want a permit for events, I don't know how they'll fit anybody in there. And then I've seen swarms of young people walk up North Main Street. When I go to water the plants in front, I hear they're coming, until they were forced to lower the volume of the music somewhat, and then the swarm stopped coming. But it really, to me, sort of looked like an invasion. As I said, I'm all for promoting all the good intentions they have, but the collateral damage for our residential area, it would be important. Thank you very much for listening. May I approach to give this person's statement to you? Oh, okay.
You can give it to the City Secretary.
I do.
Okay, anybody else, anything different?
My name is Blanca Hernandez. I live on 616 North Main, right next to Tropicasa, and it's the same problem. They don't let me sleep. I mean, I'm a single mother. I work from five in the morning to three-thirty, five. I work ten to twelve hours at GE Aviation, and I went and talked to the owner, and I told them to lower the volume, and they wouldn't. So that's, I mean, that's not a place for a bar, because there is no space, there is no parking. When they have those events, I cannot have visitors because they don't have, I mean, they don't have a parking space. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commission questions, comments?
Yes.
Questions for the applicant. Or do you, JJ?
I do. Let me start with Mr. Garcia. When was the application for this cup applied to your department?
This application came around July. It took us a few months because we were going back and forth to work out the narrative with the applicant.
And have this applicant previously applied for a cup for that location?
He had not. We had met with him many times, starting back, in fact, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Myself, the ex-environmental health and code director, as well as his deputy director, met with Pedro again, two years ago. We told him what he needed to do to come into compliance, and then we waited until this July.
And we assume that he's been in operation since October two thousand twenty-one?
As per the reports of both police and code constantly going, yes, sir, I believe they're operating.
The first case to face contact where you ascertained and determined that he, in fact, was operating a business there?
Correct, sir.
It would have been October?
Of twenty-twenty-one, yes, sir.
I'm not talking about the calls or complaints, I'm talking about someone from your department or code enforcement showed up, knocked on the door, and spoke with Mr. Rodriguez or an agent of his?
That is correct.
October two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
And between the time of October two thousand twenty-one and July two thousand twenty-three, how many times has your department or representative of your department gone out to that location to inform Mr. Rodriguez that he needed to have a conditional use permit?
It has mostly been the code enforcement department, sir. As you'll see in the report in your packet, not every time were they told they needed a CUP, but at least half a dozen. Again, throughout the past two years, they had been told to come in to see us, get a CUP, but that would have been handled by code, sir.
Has Mr. Rodriguez or any other agent of his approached your department with making that application request?
Not until, well, to be fair, two years ago, he took the application, and then never came back.
Never returned? So the first time it was returned back for this process was when?
Was two, three months ago.
Two, three months ago.
Yes, sir.
And has anyone from your department, I know this sounds like a cross-examination, but has anybody actually verified or corroborated that he actually is running a vegan store?
Yes, in fact, the planner who worked this case went out there to do her site visits. I mean, there are vegan offerings there, they have, yes.
Okay, and to operate as a vegan store, he still needed a conditional use permit?
That is an excellent question, Commissioner, not that the others weren't.
Okay.
But, yes. To operate, I mean, it is a C-three general business district, they can, tomorrow, let's say this gets denied, they can continue selling sandwiches, they can continue selling t-shirts, vinyl LPs, CDs, DVDs, BLTs, whatever.
Because I understand it is a C-three.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know I look dumb, but anyway, so going back, so my focus now is this mixed use. Well, first of all, it's for an event space, right? Can you kind of give us a summary of the mixed use, uses that are allowed with the mixed use?
That's an excellent question. So that came from the applicant themselves, because they were still kind of nebulous on what they wanted to apply for specifically. What the mixed use that we're talking about here is specifically for the events plus the retail spaces that they already have. So your BYOB and your constant events mixed in with the retail that's already allowed by RAC.
So the applications for event space, based on the square footage, what is the maximum occupancy that that space could have?
The occupancy has already been determined by the building official, it is forty-nine people, sir.
Forty-nine.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm done with my questions.
Well, a vegan store wouldn't be causing a lot of noise, a lot of this, so what was that?
It's mostly their events. So they've had been having events, again, back since twenty-twenty-one, also have been allowing alcohol to be brought in.
For the BYOB?
Correct. And so that's the issue. Like I said, should this get denied tomorrow, they could still be selling items.
Okay, I, you know, I went to go see it, and I saw the back part of it, you know, you have the house that was confirmed to the store and activities inside, you know, they're DJing and things, but outside, what, this is wanting to have events outside, and outside is only around maybe thirty by fifty in the back?
At most.
Roughly?
It's tight.
Okay, with a few benches and a few things there. So they're wanting to have events, activities outside in this permit?
Inside and outside, yes, sir.
Inside and outside.
Yes, sir.
So how would the noise level be able to be tolerable to?
He says he has people who will, there you go, outside.
So is it soundproof in the building, as well as apply or use our current occupancy or limited capacity in the building also to the outdoors? So that's why I use the number forty-nine, because I want to use that, you know, using planning and zoning expertise, have that apply to the limited-capacity event center. So when you think of event center, what comes to mind? Like, you think maybe McAllen Convention Center, huge, huge shows, you know, huge events. We're not trying to do that. We don't want to have an overcrowded space or people over-consuming on property. We're trying to scale down, scale back, we understand, you know, the nuisances that we've created in the neighborhood and in the district, and so we're trying to remedy that. So that's why we're here today, to try to figure out a solution, because this is our livelihoods, this is my profession, I've been doing this for ten-plus years.
Okay, okay, but, but, okay, what you were doing before, and what you plan to do today, in the future, is what is the difference? What would be the difference?
The difference is, well, that we would get, that we would legally be able to do this with the CUP permit, with permission from the city, and with permission from zoning and from y'all. You know, that's why we're here today, to ask for support.
So what you were doing before, you want to do it with our permission?
So we, when we first met with the planning and zoning department, we had mentioned and stated that we would be doing events here and there, so it shouldn't be a mystery that we were, of what we were doing. We just, you know, we found, we experienced our growth spurt, and our growth spurt happened to be live DJ events, music events, you know? I probably wouldn't even be here if I wouldn't have sacrificed that time to do those things. My business probably would have shut down. And so me being misinformed about ordinances and not having the proper education about them, that's why we're here today, you know?
But leading back to Commissioners and what I was questioning, I think you could see what he was, the timeline he was trying to set up, right? A CUP has guidelines and kind of rules that businesses need to abide by, right?
Yeah.
When you were told about the CUP in October of twenty-one, the failure to follow through on the application submission and...
Well, it was a failure on planning and zoning's part, because they were supposed to follow up with us, and they did not.
Planning and zoning is not responsible for following up with applicants necessarily.
Well, I mean, if I can be transparent and honest, there's not, there's a big, like, big gap in miscommunication that happens with code enforcements and business owners. It's very difficult to interpret the law when you have somebody showing up at your business telling you, telling you that you're doing X, Y, and Z, and here's a citation. There's no education behind that. When we first went to talk to the planning and zoning department to open up our business, they didn't tell us that we couldn't have events. And we specifically told them that we were going to be having limited events here and there.
Because I think one of the issues, I think it's typical, and it's also very evident that the place was doing and wasn't business illegally, as we talked about, and there's no question about that either.
There's been multiple businesses on Main Street here.
So I guess in a sense, what we're looking at is now trying to give you permission to act and do something that you were doing before, that the people complained about, but now getting us to say, hey, it's legal. Is that pretty much what we're doing?
Illegal what's illegal?
Well, to give you a conditional use permit.
Are you asking me if that's illegal to do that?
No, sir. What you're asking this city, in a sense, to, you were doing, you were acting or conducting business when you weren't supposed to. The people were complaining for noise violations, and they were complaining for other issues, correct?
Correct.
In twenty-twenty-one, you knew that you weren't supposed to, yet you continued, correct?
We continued having live events and loud music.
Okay, without a conditional use permit?
Yes.
And now, right now, we have a lot of people not wanting this because of the noise and, I guess, trash and too many, a lot of people coming in, but now you want us to, in a sense, tell you, yeah, it's okay to do it now.
So going back to the, you know, people having sexual activity and people leaving messes on the street, there's multiple businesses on Main Street, downtown is about a mile away. You know, I've experienced people almost getting into accidents.
Correct, sir, but they're not here, you are.
What's that?
They're not here, you are.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying my experience as a business owner on Main Street, I've witnessed this outside of my business, happening outside of my business, not having nothing to do with Tropicasa.
And it's not right for them to do that either?
Exactly. There's multiple bars and businesses on Main Street, and they, and the majority of them operate as live music venues, and they still get cited. So it's not just us committing these illegal activities on Main Street, it's multiple businesses.
So you and other multiple businesses commit the illegal activities?
If that's what you want to call it, yes, yes, Mayor, yeah. And where else?
Well, I'm surprisingly a fan of Tropicasa from the standpoint of what you guys bring to the city, right? I've never gone to one of the evening events, but I'm saying from the vegan market, kind of like that local bodega, you've got the vintage shop, right? There's an art gallery, to some extent, where you showcase artists.
Yes.
It appears what's happened is, to some extent, let's say, these live DJ events have taken over to be the success of your establishment.
Yes, yeah.
And has pulled away from all those other aspects, right? Those aspects can remain.
Well, the thing is, these aspects coexist with everything else. It's not like one's more vital or significant than the other, they're all interwoven together.
I understand that, but you're drawing people out for the events, or correct?
Yes, that's how we, that's how we bring in revenue into the business.
That's how you bring in a significant amount of revenue.
Yeah. Main Street has been very slow, business has been very slow, a lot of people are moving to Uptown and Midtown, and I don't want to move my business anywhere else. Like, why should I move my business to a district that is unpredictable? There's a lot of overconsumption, and there's overcrowdedness, you know, like, where are we supposed to go?
Most of the, so Main Street is a very difficult one, because there's a lot of residences mixed with a lot of business.
Yeah.
Most of the businesses there, whether they have a conditional use permit or an operating permit, also have TABC licenses, right? So they've got a separate authority that they have to follow guidelines and rules.
Yeah.
BYOB, heavily concerning for me, very concerning for me, right? Very different from having an event to having an event allowing BYOB. That's one of the more concerning aspects for me. There's security measures, lighting measures, controls, TABC certifications, all that that comes into play when you want to have alcohol consumption on your premise. To me, BYOB is kind of a scapegoat to get around all that. Now, you don't generate the revenue from it, I understand that, but you're not speaking to the aspect of what that kind of uncontrolled environment with alcohol brings. If you're having events with music, and I get some complaints from music on Main Street, not just from your venue, and most of those places turn off their music in full by eleven, that's to respect the neighborhoods.
Of course.
And at times they go a little over, at times they're a little loud, and we try to control that as best we can. But they're not having live music or DJs until 2:00 AM, which is, I think, could be very disruptive for Main Street, you know?
Mr. Haddad, what would be your suggestion for Tropicasa as a business on Main Street?
To follow kind of the understood pattern and rules that the rest of the businesses on Main Street follow. You want to have alcohol at your place, you should get a TABC license and see if that application goes through and gets approved, right? I don't think you should have music past 11:00 PM, especially on the outside, and even disruptive from the inside, right?
Yeah, that was a part of my proposal, to cut off the music at eleven outdoors, respecting the neighborhood. I had also spoken to Ms. Amanda Trevino at the planning department to try to, I guess, edit my proposal to non-BYOB, because, you know, I was having a lot of thoughts in my head, and I was thinking about, you know, I don't want to put people in danger. It was too late for me to go ahead and restructure that, and just, you know, just to be transparent.
Uh, I don't think you should have music past eleven PM, especially on, on the outside.
Yeah.
And even disruptive from the inside, right?
Yeah, that was a part of my proposal to cut off the music at eleven outdoors, respecting the neighborhood. Um, I had also, uh, spoken to Ms. Amanda Trevino at the planning department to try to, uh, I guess, um, edit my, uh, proposal to non-BYOB because, you know, I was having a lot of thoughts in my head and I was thinking about, you know, I don't want to put people in danger. It was too late for me to go ahead and restructure that. And just, you know, just to be transparent about what I was actually wanting to do, but it was too late to act on it.
Those commissioners, I usually don't, but I would like to request a motion to deny the CUP.
Second.
Well, Mayor can't make the motion. Did we get a, did we get a first?
I'll make a motion to deny the conditional use permit as set forth by Mr. Rodriguez, under the belief he's requesting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have, I need a motion to amend the zoning ordinance of City McAllen.
So move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay, we have consent agenda, but we have one item, number two, H. Tiffany.
Kirsten.
Kenton, Kirsten.
Kirsten.
Oh, we'll wait for three eight. Okay, uh, we have items, consent agenda items A through,
K.
Through K. Do we need to pull anything out?
Looks approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item three eight. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tiffany Kirsten. I'm a professional birding guide, um, and I'm also the former recreation supervisor for the McAllen Nature Center. I'm here today because Nature Park was listed as number one on the Parks and Rec priorities for the master plan. Uh, but the agenda and the packet information for today's meeting seems to clearly communicate that the city is disregarding the concerns and the voices of the residents. Campground certainly is not synonymous with Nature Park. For six years as the only full-time City of McAllen Nature Center employee, my team of part-time staff and I grew the visitation and programming to twenty thousand people annually. During this time, over these six years, to my knowledge, only two commissioners visited the nature center. The mayor, once. There was not a single line item in the budget dedicated to the McAllen Nature Center. There still is not. My staff and I saw the things that you didn't see. There was a little boy with autism who feared the trees on his first visit, but wound up a few months later running around his mother, having a difficult time keeping track of him. You hadn't spoken with the mother of the college student who had such anxiety that the only place she could go without her mother was to the McAllen Nature Center. You didn't see the middle-aged man that came to yoga three times a week with chronic health issues, barely unable to walk, whose quality of life was greatly improved over a few months of attending free yoga classes, and it was very clear that he would not be able to afford a yoga studio membership. In one of the most low-income communities in the country, the McAllen Nature Center had become an important, quiet cornerstone for low-income residents, while city management seemingly chose to look away. The McAllen Nature Center had changed the quality of life for thousands of residents. COVID came and staffing and programs disappeared completely. As businessmen, in your roles of authority and privilege, it seems you've no idea what's been lost with the degradation of the McAllen Nature Center. Low-income residents no longer have access to these opportunities. McAllen has one nature center with a million-dollar annual budget and another nature center that does not see a dime. Investment in McAllen Nature Center, and I know the City of McAllen knows that residents are requesting investment in the McAllen Nature Center and not in a campground. Not to say that a campground is a bad thing, but the request we've been making and nature parks being number one on the priority list is very clearly about the McAllen Nature Center and not the Kepler property. I respectfully ask that city management stop using semantics to generalize the ask that we are making and start taking a real look at investing in staffing and programming and the revitalization of the McAllen Nature Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item three eight.
The other thing I was going to mention on that, coming from the workshop, was, um, given how that prioritization can affect grants, should we take that, maybe, uh, have it sent out to the city commission and see where, where we, how in line we are with that prioritization? I know, I think it was Omar or, um-
Do we have a deadline?
Maybe, someone had mentioned that, that maybe we could reshuffle some of those, right? Because it's five points versus one point.
Yeah.
Especially the top three.
Three and four.
Yeah.
Can be shuffled.
Right.
There is no deadline at this point. The grant applications will be due August first and this year, master plan has to be turned in thirty days prior to, um, the grant application. So it needs to be done by, I would say, early next year, so.
So are you suggesting we get feedback from the commission, you know?
Well, yes, to affect what, what we're going to apply, what kind of grant we're going to apply for to make sure that if, if it's a priority, that needs to be in the higher priority, we put it there for the added points. The other thing I'd like to see is, I, I believe the survey had where people could submit written comments. Is that something that we can get, um, like a report of? I'd like to see what people wrote in rather than just what they kind of prioritize in those very broad categories. I'd like to see people's written feedback.
We've got that.
Okay.
And, and that would have, that's an includes, uh, attachment, but we have the written comments.
Okay.
And they're, they're classified together by types of comments, but we have all of that.
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear motion to table?
So move to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item is-
Consideration and approval of MOU between the City of McAllen PD and UTRGV.
Chief, with this standard MOU?
Standard, sure as you.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Just real quick, what is it supposed to do?
Good question.
If somebody didn't read.
Now I know you're pulling my leg.
A- as you heard earlier, the UTRGV is expanding their, their operations at McAllen and, uh, more activities are underway. So this begins to delineate the responsibilities that each of us, each, each one of us has. Uh, it's more for their benefit than ours. We clearly don't waive anything in the process of doing this, but it spells out how we may operate in given circumstances.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item C.
Thank you, Chief. C is a warrant of contract to purchase one current model front-wheel loader.
Questions?
That must be a deluxe, uh, model. It's a big one.
Yes, it's heavy duty. Yes, sir. Represent?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
It is our budget, right?
D, I'm sorry?
He was asking if it was within the budget.
Uh, you had an item, um, to supplement it?
Oh, the amendment.
For, as a budget amendment?
Yeah, but it's only, uh, fourteen thousand, but we did put it in our, in our yearly budget.
Right, but this was a, uh, the equipment breakdown, and so it wasn't, we weren't ready to replace it and therefore on the consent, we actually put the, uh, budget amendment.
Well, we have the funds and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So D is consideration approval of contract amendment number one for additional services on Daffodil.
Mayor and Commission, Hafen Associates is currently under contract for the design and construction administration services for Daffodil Avenue roadway improvements. The delay in construction of the roadway have been incurred due to the right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations. Hafen Associates contract time expired May twenty twenty-three and is requesting an amendment to the contract for additional construction administration services on the Daffodil Avenue project. Hafen Associates is requesting three, not to exceed three thousand five hundred per month, starting October tw- twenty twenty-three to March, we estimate to March twenty twenty-four for an estimated amount of twenty-one thousand. Staff recommends approval of the contract amendment number one to Hafen Associates for an additional professional service, as stipulated in the attached proposal for an average estimated fee of twenty-one thousand, uh, not to exceed amount, and we open it up to any questions.
Questions? So they've already exceeded the number of hours that were originally appropriated?
Uh, the way we had this is monthly, we, we had broke it out for the construction contract, uh, monthly, and so we went over until October. Uh, finally in October, they, they said we, we, they needed to be recouped, uh, some of their services. And so that's why we told them we, we weren't going to pay from May to October, but when they brought it up in October, we felt it was fair to bring it to commission, uh, for the remainder of the six months.
What was the original completion date for this project?
Uh, May of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so we're already five, six months past.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Uh, gentlemen, actually, we have, uh, we have Ms. Kelly Rivera here. She presented a robust presentation. Do you all have any questions or can we excuse her?
Any questions? You're excused.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have item, uh, where, item E.
Mayor and Commission, change order number one, uh, for the Dove Avenue extension project consists of added scope for Dove Avenue and existing underground thirty-six inch storm, uh, sewer pipeline, storm sewer's pipeline was encountered within the construction limits of the project. Um, the scope in, entailing the removal of the segment of pipe structure in conflict and the addition of concrete side slope structures to stabilize the end of the pipeline is required. Staff recommends approval of change order number one in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the current contract amount of three million two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-four cents and no additional contract time be added, and we open it up for any questions.
So nobody knew that there was thirty-six, three-foot pipe in there?
It's a, it, it ended up being a county line that, uh, we don't have on our, on our, uh, on our utility maps.
Right.
Um, they used it to drain, uh, Taylor Road, and so it, it just got missed.
It, it's there. It happens quite a bit.
And I guess there's no, uh, pre-cast piece to fit in there, so you have to build it there?
On, on this type, you would need to cast it in place. Uh, it's, it's a slope end treatment. We have to remove, remove the pipe that's there and then put that slope in treatment.
All right.
They got to dispose of it.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item four.
Four A is an ordinance, amending the terminology in the fire lane ordinance.
I hear motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item B.
Recommend approval of B to add the lieutenant. Captain, I'm sorry that you added in the budget.
That was budgeted.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, variances, item five.
Five A is consideration of variance request at fifty-five twenty North McCall.
And these come with a favorable recommendation?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, uh, questions on item A?
What, what's the, I mean, summarize?
It's, uh, less right-of-way on Dove, specifically zero right-of-way on Dove, extra giving. Yeah, so, so it'll stay at a hundred right-of-way, fifty percent line.
I need to recuse myself.
Yes, you do.
Yes, I do. I just realized the address.
Yes, you do.
Can I let it noted, please?
Okay, no questions for you.
Yeah.
So.
No, that, that was, that's the only way it could work, right?
That is correct, and all the subdivisions around it have received the settlement.
Received it.
The, the recuses, I, I currently lease part of that property.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item B.
B is consideration of variance at forty-nine hundred South Old Ten Street.
Also with favorable.
Also with a favorable recommendation, yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item C.
C is a variance to exceed maximum cul-de-sac length and right-of-way dedication.
Same thing?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. And I know she has a very short report.
Can I be excused?
I don't know. Six A.
Okay, so this year, this report is for the year-to-date collection report from October the first, twenty twenty-two through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This year, we began with a beginning balance of fifty-eight million, one oh six, seven dollars and twenty-four cents. We had modifications from the appraisal district in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, two seventy-seven ninety-seven, bringing our adjusted levy to fifty-eight million, eight fifty-four, two eighty-five twenty-one. We collected fifty-seven million, two hundred and ninety thousand, one sixteen thirty-five, leaving a receivable balance of one million, five sixty-four, one sixty-eight eighty-six, bringing our year-to-date collection rate to ninety-seven point thirty-four percent. In the middle of, of the report, you'll see a breakdown by property type. That just ties up to the ninety-seven point thirty-four by property type for real estate, personal property, mobile homes, and minerals. And at the bottom of the report, you'll see additional collections that we collected. Date rendition penalties, a hundred and four thousand, two forty-three seventy-four. Penalty and interest, eight hundred and four thousand, four ninety-four twelve. We collect attorney fees, which of course get paid back to the attorneys, three hundred and eighteen thousand, four sixteen seventy-three. Tax certificates, one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Return checks, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and in rollback, a hundred and four thousand, two ten forty-one. And as you all know, we also collect for the public improvement, improvement district for tres lagos, and that was four hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy point fifty. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Any questions?
I just want to say the report was very informative. It was done in which I could fully understand it and, and, and it was very informative and very good. Uh, percentages are close to ninety-eight percent. Um, we're doing well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, item D, future agenda items. Well, does anybody need a presentation on the respite report?
On what?
Nope. On, on the immigration and respite. We have a presentation. Let's go to any future agenda items? No? Uh, then we'll recess into executive session. And whoever doesn't have any further business, the game starts in about thirty-five minutes.